... meeting on time. I want to be cognizant of everybody's time and go ahead and start the meeting promptly. So, we have a full council tonight. I believe Katie Cunningham is in route, so she'll be here shortly. So, we're going to go ahead and start the meeting off with the invocation by Councilman Hicks.
Thank you, Mayor. Dear Lord and Father, thank you for today. Thank you for the many blessings that you bestow upon us. Just pray for the families that need you, Lord. Pray for and keep safe our first responders and our military personnel and their families. And may we do business tonight that is pleasing to you. In these things we pray. Amen. Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We have a few proclamations that we're going to do here tonight. The first one is the proclamation for National Night Out, which will be read by Councilman Mahoney.
Proclamation for City of Sibolo National Night Out. Whereas the National Association of Town Watch is sponsoring a unique nationwide crime, drugs, and violence prevention program on October 7, 2025, entitled National Night Out. And whereas the 42nd Annual National Night Out provides a unique opportunity for citizens of Sibolo to join forces with thousands of communities across the state of Texas in promoting cooperative police, community, crime, and drug prevention efforts. And whereas the National Night Out event is a year-long community-building campaign designed to heighten crime prevention awareness and encourage many citizens to play a vital role in assisting law enforcement agencies through joint crime, drug, and violence prevention in the state of Texas, and are supporting National Night Out 2025 locally. And whereas it is essential that all citizens of the state
All right. One more to go. The next proclamation is the city of Sibolo's 60th Anniversary, read by Councilman Roberts.
of Texas be aware of the importance of crime prevention programs and the impact that their
Proclamation declaring the city of Sibolo's 60th Anniversary. Whereas, October 20, 2025,
participation can have on reducing crime, drugs, and violence in the state of Texas.
marks the 60th anniversary of the city of Sibolo. And whereas, the history of Sibolo
And whereas police-community partnerships, neighborhood safety, awareness, and cooperation
begins long before its incorporation, as the area was once home to the Comanche and other tribes, and later to German settlers who arrived in the mid-1800s. And whereas, the
are important themes of the National Night Out program. Now therefore, be it resolved
name Sibolo, meaning Buffalo, reflects the heritage of the region and was inspired by
that we, the mayor and city council of the city of Sibolo, hereby call on the citizens
the Sibolo Creek that flows through the area. And whereas, the development of the Southern
of the city of Sibolo to join us and the National Association of Town Watch in supporting
Pacific Railroad through present-day Sibolo in 1876 established an important connection
the 42nd Annual National Night Out on Tuesday, October 7, 2025. Further, we hereby proclaim
to San Antonio, Houston, and beyond, laying the foundation for a thriving farming community.
Tuesday, October 7, 2025, as a national night out in the city of Sibolo. And witness whereof,
And whereas, the Old Spanish Trail, a historic transcontinental route, also passed through this area, further linking Sibolo to regional trade and travel. And whereas, on August 28,
we have herein to set our hands and cause the seal of the state of Texas to be affixed.
1965, Sibolo residents voted to become an independent township, and on October 2, 1965,
Mark Allen, Mayor.
held an election to select its first municipal officers, electing Emo Grooms as mayor, along with Carl Beizer, Ted Dykes, Alwyn Lake, Fred Nimitz, and De O'Trady as the first city council. And whereas, since its incorporation, Sibolo has grown from a small agricultural town in a vibrant, diverse community that is part of the San Antonio Northwest Metrocom region, with Randolph Air Force Base nearby serving as a vital presence. And whereas, the city of Sibolo continues to honor its history while embracing progress, growth, and the shared values that make it a strong and thriving community. And whereas, since adopting a home
Can y'all remind us how people register for National Night Out if you are a neighborhood?
rule charter on September 21, 2004, the city of Sibolo has been empowered to chart its
Members out there, Eddie Eagle, McGruff the Crime Dog, and we'll go hang out with
own course, guided by the wisdom of its elected officials, the tireless service of its city
you guys for a couple hours on National Night Out. Look forward to seeing you guys there.
staff, and the invaluable spirit of community volunteers, all of whom have worked together
All right. Thank you so much. I hope everybody comes out for National Night Out
to build the vibrant city we know today. And whereas, special activities have been planned
in their neighborhoods and enjoys the evening, getting to know their neighbors and our police
to celebrate the 60th anniversary of the city's incorporation. And whereas, it is fitting
officers and first responders. All right. Next up, we have a proclamation called Faith
that we come together as residents, businesses, and community partners to honor the legacy
and Blue, read by Councilwoman Sanchez Stevens.
of those who came before us and to celebrate Sibolo's achievements over the past six decades.
Proclamation, National Faith and Blue Weekend. Whereas the city of Sibolo is committed
Now therefore, I, Mark D. Allen, Mayor of the city of Sibolo, do hereby proclaim the
to fostering safer, stronger, and more inclusive neighborhoods through mutual respect, understanding,
fiscal year 2026, October 1, 25 through September 30, 26, as city of Sibolo's 60th Anniversary
and collaboration between residents and law enforcement. And whereas, National Faith and Blue Weekend, the nation's largest collaborative policing initiative, will be held October 10
in the city of Sibolo, and encourage all citizens to join in celebrating this milestone
through 13, 2025, creating opportunities for meaningful engagement between law enforcement
in our community's proud history. Mark Allen, Mayor.
professionals and community members through partnerships with faith-based organizations. And whereas, the Sibolo Police Department, under the exemplary leadership of Chief of Police Thedrick Andras, will participate in this initiative by hosting community-focused Faith and Blue events, including planned community celebrations at Discovery Church Sibolo and Everyday Christian Fellowship Sibolo, to strengthen bonds between local law enforcement, congregations, and residents. And whereas, these upcoming efforts are intended
All right. So, in honor of our 60th Anniversary, we're going to take a six-minute break or
to foster healing, reduce biases, and build mutual trust, advancing the city of Sibolo's vision of a community where all residents feel safe, valued, and included. And whereas,
10-minute break and enjoy some cake. And so, there is cake at the back, so if you could,
participation in Faith and Blue reflects the Sibolo Police Department's dedication
please help yourself to some cake and enjoy some refreshments for a few minutes. We're
to community policing and unity, contributing to a national movement that spans all 50 states
going to go on a break.
with thousands of activities and partnerships. And whereas, the city of Sibolo recognizes that such initiatives can help address today's challenges in policing and criminal justice by bringing together people of faith, law enforcement, and community leaders for dialogue, understanding, and positive change. Now therefore, Mayor Mark Allen of the city of Sibolo, on behalf of the city council and the residents of Sibolo, do hereby proclaim October 10 through the 13, 2025, as National Faith and Blue Weekend in the city of Sibolo. We commend the Sibolo Police Department and Chief of Police Thedrick Andras for their commitment to building bridges with our community through the upcoming Faith and Blue Initiative, particularly through the planned community celebration events at Discovery Church Sibolo and Everyday Christian Fellowship Sibolo. Further, it is encouraged that all residents, faith-based organizations, and community groups to participate in or host events during National Faith and Blue Weekend, joining together to strengthen the bonds that will help ensure Sibolo remains a city of safety, community strength, and unity.
Okay. It's been at least 10 minutes, so we are going to resume the city council meeting, so I can get everybody, you know, on with their evenings. Okay. So, next up is our citizens to be heard. This is the only time during the council meeting that a citizen can address the city council. It is an opportunity for visitors and guests to address the city council on any issue, to include agenda items. All visitors wishing to speak must fill out the sign-in roster prior to the start of the meeting. The council may not deliberate any non-agenda issue, nor may any action be taken on any non-agenda issue at this time. However, the city council may present any factual response to items brought up by citizens. Attorney General Opinion JC0169, limit of three minutes each. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a body. Remarks may also be addressed to any individual member of the council, so long as the remarks are about matters of local public concern and not disruptive to the meeting or threatening to the member or any attendee, including city staff. Any person violating this policy may be requested to leave the meeting, but no person may be requested to leave or forced to leave the meeting because of the viewpoint expressed. This meeting is livestreamed. The first person we have on our list is Kevin Lindquist. Kevin, welcome, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, leaders of Sibolo and family. My name is Kevin Lindquist, and I'm here and I represent three organizations. The first one is the Tri-County Chamber of Commerce. I am the new Military Affairs co-chair. With that, I want to talk about some of the new concepts that we have coming up. One concept that we're working on is our Small Business Symposium concept, a two-day training event where now we're focusing on junior leaders that work at some of these small businesses versus working on executives and business leaders. We want to work on those folks who've been there for a year and they're looking to become management material. In that one-day training concept, we want to talk about the stresses of business, so we'll have some therapists come out and talk about some exercises, things that they can do. We'll talk about financial literacy, and then we'll also talk about some other things on how to get business grants where if they, in the future, want to get their own businesses, they can go through those channels to learn about that. Now, the cool part is the second day where we're looking at doing a one-day Lean Six Sigma White Belt certification course. We want to teach these young leaders on how to do project management. The best way to do it is through Agile and some of these other business tools that we're using, but let's give them a foundation and certification cost at no cost to them through what the proceeds that we get through that two-day course. With that, we're looking at doing that sometime in April, and looking at the location to be North Lakeview Community College, and we're working with them right now to try to get that location. With also, when we talk about the proceeds, somewhere in that schedule, we're looking at giving out scholarships to the college students there at the Northeast Lakeview Community College, grants, and also, we want to do like a junior shark tank, something where if you have a young child who wants to start a small business, lemonade stand, we want to teach them at that young age, from age to 18, hey, we're going to give you a $500 grant to go towards your LLC, and have them build and give them that knowledge, and their parents help them out. Once again, we're trying to do something different that other people are not doing, but we're trying to make sure we focus on the youth and get them supported. Next, I represent J. Washington Lodge 191, Masonic Lodge, Freemason's. We have a few events coming up. We actually have a Halloween Fest, adult Halloween party coming up on October 25. Those proceeds go to our Knights of the Pythagorean, which is our youth organization for their camping trips, and also for some of the education events that we do with them. Next, I got to talk about the Best Fraternity in the World, Phi Beta Sigma Fraternity Incorporated. With, we also have another Halloween Ball coming up, this Adult Halloween Ball, which is called the Monster Ball on October 30 first. With there, there is a cost, it's about $23 per ticket, but that, there are free giveaways that we do for there. We represent the businesses that are our sponsors, and there's also a free giveaway for a trip to Dominican Republic, and then other small ventures and other prizes there as well, and hotel stays. First and foremost, we want to thank our first responders, me being a retired Army Vet, a combat medic. Every year, we try to give, actually, we do give turkeys to the fire department and also police department. We're going to be doing it again this year as well. We're looking anywhere from 30 to 50 turkeys and possibly some more, as well as we get more funds in. Pending any questions? Pending any questions, that's all I have today. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Appreciate it, sir. All right, next up, we have Tammy, I think it's LaFond. Did I say your last name right? I'm sorry. Thank you, Tammy. Welcome.
Hi. Hello, everyone. My name is Tammy LaFond and I'm new over here at Venado Crossing. And my two questions are, are we now dedicated to the city of Siblo? Because I know they were waiting to do that. And also, the light that they just put up, we just want to know when the lights are going to be turned on, just...
Now, did you say that, are we dedicated to the city?
Yeah, I remember speaking to you earlier in the year when they, when they first started building up the neighborhood and they were putting in, we were talking about the speed limit signs and we were saying the city wasn't, we weren't quite dedicated to the city yet.
Okay.
But I hope so because I signed up for National Night Out and I'm going to have all the food.
Which neighborhood are you talking about?
Venado Crossing.
Okay, so with that, the, we haven't, I don't want to believe we've accepted the infrastructure there yet.
Infrastructure, that's all it is.
And so, the way that works is you're already in Siblo and so that's been done. So, what happens is whenever a developer finishes, once they built the last house and they're all done, they'll dedicate the infrastructure to the city, which is the streets, the, you know, the sewage or the sewer system, things like that, sidewalks. And then, but we have the ability to say no until it's done. We usually have a checklist and we make sure that we're accepting quality infrastructure. And so, but the answer is no. We haven't accepted the infrastructure, right? Is that right, Mr. Reed?
I'll let Chris Otto respond to that. He's our city engineer.
We did conduct a punch walk in one of the units. It's probably been a year ago, but we have not accepted anything.
Okay. Thank you, Chris. But as far as National Night Out, game on, yep.
Because my license stays shared, but I live in Siblo. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I think that's more of a post office thing, so, but, but yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, last person we have signed up is Pamela, is it Harrison? Okay. Welcome, Pamela.
Thank you. I'm just here to give you an update on Siblo Deer Creek, in Deer Creek Boulevard. All of a sudden, let me get clear first, was August the original finish date? It was?
No, the city advertised this project would start in May, it was May 13th, and that our project deadline was October 27th.
Well, we were all told it was going to be finished in August. And then we were told it was going to be September. And then we were told August, October 27th. Nobody worked on those roads, as you know, from May to June and part of July. Nobody was there, nobody was working. They might have put a ramp in here and there. And now, since a man got hit by a car because of those barriers and those signs on there, a man was hit. My husband and I personally were almost killed on that road. We were going toward 3009. One of the big heavy rigs carrying heavy equipment was coming off of 3009, going the wrong way. He wasn't going to stop. He just kept coming and we had to stop and literally back up. And then he proceeded to go between two of the great big cones. And we told him that wasn't necessary and we got flipped off. And then when we come back around and told him, we got a number from the truck and said we were going to call the company and he says, well, go ahead. That's what's been going on, on that street. There's no accountability. And guess what? Two days, two days they came to work last week. They tried to do three months' worth of work in two days. I've got some pictures here. And they worked to 7:00 at night and they were working at 5:00 in the morning. And these are a picture of somebody's yard, a friend of mine's, that never had to have a curb put in their yard because when it did rain, all of the water was coming in their yard. And would you like to see these pictures? You're more than welcome. This is the type of work they're doing. It's not quality work, not at all. To try to put two days in three months' work, this is totally unacceptable. And you've got a contract with these people for three more jobs or so.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, Pamela, for bringing this to our attention. Appreciate it. All right, next up...
No, I have something else to say. When I confronted somebody about the date, he said it was always October 27th. That is not true and misinformation is being spread to the citizens and that's not appropriate.
Okay. Thank you. All right, next up is Consent Agenda. All items listed below are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the council and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda. Item A, approval of the minutes of the council meeting on September 9th. B, approval of the expense and lease payments and print overage charges to Documation Inc. in the estimated amount of $75,000 for fiscal year '25. C, approval of the July '25 revenue and expense report pending final acceptance of the city's financial audit for '24-'25 fiscals. And D, approval of the July 2025 check register. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to have be removed. I don't like that estimated.
The Documation? Okay. So, we have a motion for A, C, and D?
Yes, I have a motion for A.
We have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Roberts. Motion by Hicks. Please vote. Okay, motion carries 7-0. So, about B, do we, you need some information on that?
Well, you've got in the estimated amount. I mean, can we not get a factual amount? I mean, I don't like coming up and saying, well, it's going to, could be $75,000. I mean, that's a lot of money. That's a salary of...
It is. The reason it's estimated is because we haven't gotten the end-of-year amounts for any overages. I don't know what they could be at the end of September.
Then why don't we wait until we get it and then we approve it?
Because we're already behind on the bills because I had to bring it to council.
Mayor and council, if I could just add to Mr. Beekman's statement. So, Documation's an under $50K contract, but because we're, we've been adding more printers and we have more charges, it exceeds $50,000. So, he's before you asking for approval up to $75,000. Of course, we will only pay based upon our actual usage and the rates that we're charged for the use of the machine, be it a black and white, a color copy, or scanning used on the machine. And that's why it's estimated $75,000. We would not exceed $75,000. But we do need this approved so that we can make payment to the vendor because whereas it historically was under $50,000, we're now exceeding $50,000. And that means...
Reed, what are we going to pay them? You don't have a amount.
So, it's a, it's a contract, correct?
It's a contract.
And it's a cost-per-service contract.
It's a cost-per-service, yes.
And so, we already have a contract with them and this amendment just brings the total amount of the whole contract to 75.
To above, above $50,000 and...
Above $50,000, but it brings the total amount of the contract to 75. We're not adding an additional 75 to the contract. The total contract is being amended to up to 75.
I'm aware of that.
You said that correctly.
Okay. No, I was clarifying because the way that it's written, it could have gone either way. And that was my clarification, that the contract was below $50,000. It's a cost-per-service contract. We have a set cost-per-service that is not changing with overages. It was a budget year, we had the comprehensive plan, we had a lot of stuff that we printed a lot of documents for this year. I can understand why we would have an additional overage with the amount of things that were printed. Some of our packets were like two reams of paper thick. So, I can understand that. So, I just wanted to confirm that we're not adding an additional $75,000. It's going up, the total contract value would be up to $75,000 pending the final tally of how many?
That is correct.
I do have a question, if you don't mind.
Yes, ma'am.
So, has it ever been more than $75,000 in...
No, this is the first year that it's gotten to that amount. Whenever we added two machines for the community center, it brought that cost down.
It brought that, okay. The reason that I mention it is because I kind of go back to a presentation slide when we were discussing expenses exceeding revenues by $330,000 to bring costs down, that the, we were supposed to reduce IT by $12,000 for printing overages. And it doesn't sound like there was any reduction in the budget or even the proposed at the beginning in June of overages and printing. It sounds like this budget was always at $75,000 and we were presented information that reduce IT by $12,000 for printing overages.
That's for fiscal year '26.
This is for '25. No, I understand that it's for '25. It was a consideration to have increased that budget by $12,000.
I don't under, I can't hear you for some reason, I'm sorry.
You can't hear me?
So, the question is, is, so, in our budget presentation, we reduced FY '26 by $12,000 for printing overages. So, this is FY '25, the funds are available and because of our actual uses, use to date, that's why we are asking for this for FY '25. So, for FY '26, the budget is what we approved and with the new software that we've implemented, we can track who's printing what, how much, so that we can manage this as we're growing the number of copiers and printers that we have.
Just for clarity, since it's a contract, how can you reduce a budget by $12,000 if that was presented and proposed before for the fiscal year 2026?
It was specifically for overage printing and not the actual contract. So, I had budgeted, based on this year, I'd budgeted enough to cover possible overages in '26, but we decided to take that out and work with the Paper Cut software that we're using because it does track. And it has actually helped reduce the amount of paper that we've been printing. Lots of times, people will print stuff and forget they had it and it would just sit there. But now with Paper Cut, it actually just deletes it out of the system if it's never printed. So, it has done some reductions for our printing right now. But we haven't been on it a full year yet.
We're happy to come back with council with more information so that we could explain that better to you.
Thank you, I appreciate that. It's just that we just came fresh out of having a discussion on the budget and I'm just trying to track all of these costs that were said that were being had. But it was difficult to see early on what was being reduced. And when I hear that we're having a $75,000 contract, I just wanted clarity on how that was being reduced. But thank you.
Okay.
What number, what letter is this?
It's B.
I make a motion to approve 7B.
Seven.
Motion by Councilwoman Cunningham, second by Councilman McLaughlin. Motion carries 5-2. All right, next up is A, Staff Update. Mr. Reed?
Give me one second, Mayor, I'm just scrolling down. All right, I want to start off tonight with the Ron PD Memorial Community Garden. I'm adding this to our ongoing CIP updates. Public Works staff has begun the restoration of the decomposed granite walkways at the garden. The Public Works Assistant Director, Margarita, who's here tonight, met with Rachel today, I believe it was you? Yes, that met with Rachel today to discuss restoration of the planter beds. Staff is purchasing the materials as requested by the association for this effort. Staff will coordinate with Rachel. She's the lady, and I'm sorry, Ms. Roberts, you might remember Rachel's last name, but I just remember Rachel from the Master Gardeners Association. They're coordinating with Rachel on a day for the re-level of the planter beds and Public Works will continue to provide maintenance support for the Master Gardeners Association. The city, or the Siblo Community Center renovations, construction is completed, that's the interior renovations, and the contractor will meet with the chief building official on this Friday for an inspection. And then a certificate of occupancy for that space would be issued if we meet all criteria. Public Works staff will complete cleaning of facility by Thursday of this week. The senior program will begin moving into the facility on Friday of this week. Staff will assist on moving all remaining items from Grange Hall after 2:00 PM on Friday. Senior program will officially begin at the Siblo Community Center on Monday, September 29th. And then the Public Works staff is ordering the building plaque, this is the dedication plaque, and we also talked about a plaque to commemorate and recognize the Jackson family for their service to the community through the use of that facility. So, we have both of those. And we'll schedule a soft opening once delivery dates are confirmed. Been talking with the Grange Hall and Ms. Roberts, there's going to be with the senior program, a recognition program on October 27th. And this is the Veterans Quilt of Honor?
Valor. Quilt of Valor?
Quilt of Valor. And so, we, I've mentioned to council previously, we're going to do a soft opening with this phase one because it's not the whole building. And so, I was thinking October 27th might be a great day for our soft opening. The Quilt of Valor ceremony would happen in the morning, be done around 12:30-ish. And then we were thinking of starting this soft opening to recognize the senior program opening in our new community center. And so, that's something that if council's supportive of, we would send out a notice of that with more details. But it'll just be our usual kind of recognition of a new facility being open. And with the senior program, they're just celebrating them being in the space. We wanted to give them this time so that they're settled in to the space before we do a soft opening. So, I'll work with Ms. Semics to make sure that if council's supportive of that, we give you an invite to the event. Again, that's October 27th. We may adjust the time a little bit, but around 12:30. Yes, sir, Mr. Hicks?
The sidewalk doesn't connect. Are we going to be connecting it?
So, yep. My next comment is, is that Public Works staff has been installing the crosswalk for the signalized, signal for the crosswalk. They have cut the curb, they have cut the grass and dirt back, they're connecting sidewalks on our side and they're connecting a sidewalk on the other side. They will be installing the actual crosswalk pole that will be a pedestrian-initiated crosswalk that has flashing lights around the, you know, pedestrians symbol. And so, those are underway. In fact, if you went over there today, I think the concrete got poured today.
Well, most of the concrete got poured, but there's a section between the cigar bar...
Oh, yes, sir. There's a sidewalk section that we are also going to pour.
Okay.
Yep. I talked to staff...
I saw everything else done, but I noticed that wasn't...
Yep, I talked to staff about that. Yes, sir. Thank you for just bringing that up. So, everything is on schedule for the community center opening and for the senior program to move in. On the Street Rehab Package Number One, this project started May 13th and I'm, I'm the one that told Ms. Harrison, she was kind not to mention my name, but I'm the one that has told her that the project's established completion date has been October 27th. That is what our Public Works Director, Julio Gomez, has in the contract with the contractor. So, for whoever's spreading misinformation about when the project was to be done, that certainly wasn't my Public Works staff or myself giving wrong information. So, to that point, though, I'd like to say the project is 30 days ahead of schedule. Pavement is complete. That is from Siblo Valley Drive into the Deer Creek neighborhood, as well as on the other side where we fixed the entry on the short portion of Deer Creek Boulevard. So, paving is done. As council's become aware, you don't put the striping down until about 14 days after the pavement is in. So, our striping is scheduled for the week of October 6th. There's some cleanup by curb areas that they're doing now, but curb to curb, the work is done other than striping. Green Valley Road, Dean Road to Westmont substantially complete. The shoulder restoration is pending, grading and Hydra Mulch to reestablish ground cover. is pending, grading and Hydra mulch to reestablish ground cover. Green Valley Road, Siblo Valley Drive to Green Valley Loop, this is going two shirts. Pavement is complete, striping is scheduled for the week of October sixth. Note that that's the same week that they're doing the Deer Creek Boulevard striping. Moving on to street rehab package number two, Silverwing, that's Siblo Valley Drive to Thistle Creek. Crews continue saw-cutting curb ramps, demo is next week, and this, this project is going to go at a slightly slower pace because it is an in-depth restoration and rebuilding of that road.
No, Silverwing's a mill and overlay.
Mill and overlay, so I misspoke.
Do the eighty ramps first, and then we'll do the mill and overlay afterwards.
Thank you. Town Creek Road is staging, there's pothole and surveying will be complete this Friday. Construction will begin Monday, September twenty-ninth. Someone brought to my attention that we might have had some traffic control signs out there, digital signs, saying something like September ninth the work was going to start, so I just want to clear the air that construction will start on Monday, September twenty-ninth on Town Creek Road. Did you want to add anything, Mr. Gomez? Okay. And then Firebird Run, that's Silverwing to Kipper Avenue, project will begin January fifth, so that's the last of the six roads that we're working on, and we're waiting until after January twenty-fifth to avoid conflict during the holidays.
You said January fifth or twenty-fifth for Firebird?
January fifth.
Twenty, okay, thank you.
And then the GVC Power Up Grant, GVC is complete with installation of power to the pond area. Solar benches are on back order and expected to be delivered sometime around September thirtieth. Deer Creek Drainage Improvements, the demo is complete. Remember, Mr. Gomez gave an update to council that we made the contractor aware that the, the failure of the infrastructure was on them. They have stepped up and they are doing the work at no additional cost to the city, so they have done the demo work. Concrete scheduled for the week of September twenty-ninth. The FM seventy-eight water main extension, the water main is twenty-five percent complete. FM seventy-eight sewer rehabilitation, pre-con meeting scheduled for September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five. And, Mr. Gomez, this is the sewer rehabilitation going towards the RV Fun Town, right, in that area? Yes. Veterans' Nimitz Park renovations, we're in the planning stage. Kimley Horn will hold a town hall during the November Parks and Recreation Commission meeting. And so, this update, there's more detail as to what they're doing at that meeting. There will be a presentation to council as well after that, so that you can give us further direction on next steps with Nimitz and Veterans Park. On Tully Road, staff is continuing to work on that project regarding land acquisition efforts. And then, no update on the Town Creek Trail project. Again, we're working with UPRR on the railroad crossing, that is the holdup on that project. And that is all for my updates tonight, Mayor and Council.
Mr. Reed, I've got a connection with UP that I'm working also to help facilitate that.
And I appreciate that, sir. Any help you can offer on this project, we are going to take it.
Will that be to help on Main Street in downtown Siblo?
Well, it's to go under the tracks.
We want to go under the tracks, yes. Mr. Hicks said that right.
Help eleven oh-three and getting that one moving forward.
Yeah, we, we need them to work on safety for the downtown right there on Main Street.
And that is a separate project that we've been talking to text out about, yes, improving the Main Street railroad crossing.
Okay. All right. We have a, so there was a Siblo Fest update on the agenda, anything on that?
What I can tell councils that we are on schedule with Siblo Fest, so the city staff have been meeting bi-weekly, we're going to weekly now that we're within a month. We have vendor registration going on, we have our vendors who are providing rides, a zoo, and other attractions are all lined up. We have our music acts for the event, so all is going according to schedule. And Mr. Howard is here, Mr. Howard, if you want to say anything about Siblo Fest and our preparation, if you want to say something in one to two minutes?
And, yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Reed. And then also give us the date, please.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and City Council. The date for Siblo Fest is October eighteenth, and right now, we are almost at capacity of our vendors. We are pushing close to about a hundred and sixty vendors, up about possibly, I think, twenty from last year, so this is something that is growing year by year. We are growing in our rides, as you may or may not be aware, last year we had eight carnival rides, this year we have twenty rides, and this year we have a special surprise for the citizens and residents at the end of Siblo Fest this year. So, I'm not sure if I should go ahead and say it or not, I'll go ahead and keep it a secret, but this year is going to be really exciting. It's, again, it's growing, it's expanding, and I think it's going to be a great Siblo Fest. We are doing everything that we can to correct some of the, some of the issues that we had last year. We heard the vendors, we heard the residents, so we put all of those things into place, and with the new structure, the new format, this year we are going to do a lot more from the perspective of customer service for our residents. So, they're going to be really excited how Siblo Fest turns out this year.
Thank you very much to you and staff for all the hard work in preparing. I know it's not easy to put this on every year, so you and your team are doing a great job, David. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
It's, it's our all-hands-on-deck, once-a-year event. Mayor and Council, we also have Zach Ryan from Solid Waste, for our Solid Waste Transition Update. Of course, Waste Connections has now, in just five more days, been our wastewater, waste, solid waste provider for two months. So, if Mr. Ryan wants to come up and give an update to council, there's a handout that, have we handed out? We've already handed it out to you, he'll reference that handout.
Good evening.
Welcome.
So, first I'd like to introduce one of my key members. Matt, you can come up here. Matt Clark is our operations manager. He was heavily involved in the planning portion of coming into the city regarding setting our team up for success, routing which team members we're going to bring here. And then he continues to be a major part of the transition on a day-to-day basis, from everything, from talking to individual residents or just getting out here and making sure everything's getting done properly. Matt has been with the company for about a year, but actually, just give a little bit of your quick background.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, Council. My name's Matt Clark with Waste Connections. I've been there for about a year, I'm in charge of all the residential goings of the day-to-day, picking up the trash, picking up the recycle, and also the bulk and brush. We're trying to do a great job for you guys, and we hope that our services is above what your expectations were, and we're going to continue to, to just continue to succeed with it, so thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Yeah, so, I think a good way to think of it is, if you do think it's going really well, continue to think of me, and if you don't think it's going too well, then think of Matt. Matt Clark. So, just to give a quick update on some things, so, we've had a lot of success. Part of that is, a big part of that is because of the great communication that we have with city staff. When we are running into issues, we are tracking down where, why, when, and trying to shore it up. If anything gets elevated, escalated, Mr. Reed is on the phone with myself and Jason, and we're taking on the challenges as they happen, so. Things aren't perfect, actually, I was on the phone on a Teams call today with some staff members, trying to iron out some things, but a lot of it is, the wrinkles are starting to smooth. In the month of August, we collected over a thousand tons of household waste, solid waste, two hundred tons of recycle, and what's another fun one? A hundred, over a hundred tons of brush, bulk and brush. So, the, the men and women are executing well. Most importantly, zero accidents, right? So, the safety's been, the safety's been good. Anything else you think we should?
I got a quick question. So, it turns out Katie was right, paint cans do go bad, and so, I've got three old ca, cans of paint and.
Come and pick it up.
That's right, okay. Forgot about that.
[laughing].
Exactly how to do it.
Yeah.
Didn't make it past the first ten seconds.
And, Mayor and Council, just, I want to give kudos to Waste Connections, they're producing this handout, they're paying for the Community Impact Newspaper insert, but on the insert that you have a copy of, Mayor, if you're serious about getting rid of paint cans, there's a one-eight-hundred number, it's one-eight-hundred-four-four-nine-seventy-five-eight-seven. If you call that number and you're a Siblo resident, they will work with you to schedule your collection day, receive a collection kit by mail, you'll pack all your items in the bag, and on your day of collection, put it out by your door, your garage, your porch by seven AM, they pick it up for you. You don't have to drive anywhere to get rid of that household hazardous waste, and they do e-waste as well, which my wife then said, our son has a broken monitor that we found after he left for college, so we'll be calling to get rid of some e-waste.
Yeah, it's an excellent service in the city that I lived in previous to moving here. You had to drive and drop it off and actually pay, so, yeah, pay a lot more.
All right.
So, I think that is everything, if there's any questions or?
You guys are doing a great job, thank you so much.
Appreciate it. All right, thank you.
And Mayor, I just have one other thing for council, moving on to a different topic, and that is, I'd like to ask if council's interested in another workshop, that's your five-thirty to about six-fifteen, six-thirty workshop. You did one during the summer, it was successful for us to get some of the presentations that are really just for your information and guidance, not action. And so, on October fourteenth, some of the topics, if you're interested in a workshop, these are topics that we would load up for that hour, so that it takes an hour or more off of your regular meeting, or prevents us from meeting until midnight and possibly running out of time on items. So, here they are. Working with Public Works, they may be ready to come back with the backflow inspection program and different options for backflow. We have Ms. Elizabeth Taplin speaking on the Employee Market Compensation Study and Merit, and this is a follow-up to the Budget Workshop number one, where we're providing additional information. There's also an annual review and update on the investment policy, that, those are three topics that if council was interested in a workshop, we would be ready to go on those three topics.
I don't know, what do y'all think? Want to do a workshop?
When did you want to do this?
He's wanting to do it the same day. Either we move our appointments to the last week?
[inaudible].
I know.
So, how about we do a workshop on October twenty-eighth, we bump it for two weeks?
Twenty-eight, what's the amount?
That's right, the twenty, what would be?
Twenty-seven.
Yeah. Now, we may still, we would have different topics because these topics would just move to the regular meeting, but on October twenty-eighth, I can tell you that, I say the twenty-eighth, on October twenty-seventh. One very important presentation that would be perfect for a workshop is Jessica Vassar with Fries and Nichols is expected to be ready to give you an initial presentation on the South Siblo Wastewater Master Plan. So, this is a very important project, you will have a lot of questions, it would be a great opportunity for you to have a workshop, to have that dialogue, so that it's not eating up one hour of your regular meeting, and that topic alone may very well be forty-five minutes long, assuming your questions are extending the dialogue.
I like that.
Okay. If council's okay with October twenty-seventh, a workshop at five-thirty P.M.?
Is that on a Monday?
Yes, that's Monday, we bumped it up because of the TML conference, and I appreciate council reminding me of that when I was saying the wrong date.
Okay.
Yes. Seeing no objection here, no objection, I'm looking at Ms. Simics, we will have a workshop five-thirty P.M. on October twenty-seventh. Thank you, Mayor and Council, I am done.
Thanks, Mr. Reed. All right, next up is item number nine A, discussion action on the appointment of members to the Siblo Youth Council. I'll open up the floor on that one, if anybody has any comments, please feel free.
I just had a comment, I noticed that my name was on this, I actually did not call for this agenda item, but it did need to, we did need to set those appointments for this youth council. It was, I think we also need to consider having all the applications be due by August fifteenth, since we have appointments on even-numbered months with boards and commissions. And this particular one, I believe the applications were open all the way till August the thirtieth, leaving no time for this particular board and commissions to come forward for approval, for appointment for council. And so, I think we need to consider that in the future. The students were sworn in before the appointment of the youth council was made, and for this reason, we should consider having this appointment tonight.
Mayor, there were, there's twenty individuals on the youth council, and they, there are seven of them returning from last youth council, and they are in grades from seventh to twelfth.
Yeah, well, I, I applaud them for, for coming out, and at least seven of them coming back, that's fantastic. Glad, glad to see the interest and willingness for our youth to come and participate in this program. Anything, Katie?
No, I just, I think that this is something that we probably need to discuss with appointments, is this a board that we're going to make them come individual? I know we've gone over this over and over and over again, but this is not a committee that is a decision-making committee. Anything that they do would have to go through council for approval, so they're not making decisions on where funding's going to go, they would have to still bring it to us for approval, so, I don't know, I struggle with making it, treating it like planning and zoning where we have to have them come in for an interview, because these are kids, it's a school night, it's a whole, it's a whole hassle. A lot of them are in other activities, too, so getting them here on a Thursday, or Tuesday, even if it is before our council meetings, is going to be difficult. And they're dependent, most of them are, a lot of them are young, like junior high, and they don't drive, so getting them, they're dependent on a parent to get here and stuff like that, so if we do need to appoint them, then I recommend just approving all twenty of the applicants.
I understand that, Mrs. Cunningham, but we've got policies, and I know that the three of us are working on that, but if we got, once again, and I've said this over and over and over in my eight-year tenure here, if we're not going to follow our policies, take those policies, throw them in the garbage, and we have the wild, wild west.
Do we have policies for youth council? Because youth council didn't exist until last year.
It, it existed whenever I was here, I've been here eight years, and it was here before. It restarted, it restructured, but yes, if we got policies, then we need to follow them. That's all I'm saying, Mrs. Cunningham, that's it.
And Katie, to your point, I agree, I think a blanket one would be good, I think it would be hard to get twenty students to come to an interview. Last year, we looked at the applications, this year we didn't get a single application. We got last-minute spreadsheet, after they were sworn in, we got a spreadsheet of who they were, and, and why they were applying. There's just governmental processes and that we need to follow, that's all. This is a committee, this is a commission, it's, it's a youth council, it's supposed to be fun, right? But one thing that we understand is that council usually does appointments, and so, and that's just honoring the processes of government, absolutely blanket, let's, let's get to know who they are. I think as council members, we should know who these students are and possibly come to their meetings and say hello, and, and praise them for volunteering and for coming to be a part of it. But because we are a governing body, we should be creating these appointments, and, and as far as policies go, because it is a new youth council, it does, it's, it's, it's a youth council, it does, it would fall under the policies of our commissions, boards, and committees.
And we actually did receive the applications on September sixteenth.
All right, so, so the question is, do we want to, do one blanket approval, or do we want them to come and individually apply? Is that the question? Let's, let's get a vote going or something? Is that what we're asking?
So, I'd like to make a motion to appoint all members that have applied for the youth council.
Just second.
Okay. So, we have a motion on the floor by Sanchez Stevens, second by Mrs. Roberts. Please vote. This is to approve everybody. Okay. All right, seven-zero, thank you. Next up is nine B, discussion action on the approval of the Siblo Community Center rental agreement and associated fees, David Howard.
Good evening again, Mayor and City Council. On August twelfth, City Council. On August 12th, City Council gave City Staff a directive to come up with a rental agreement with the following points of operational hours, rental hours, associated fees, and the alcohol policy. Myself and some of the other leadership team looked at some of the policies for some of the surrounding cities, using that as a baseline to come up with the agreement that you guys currently have. Tonight, I stand before you getting your approval on this particular rental agreement.
I do have a quick question. When were you looking to start renting the facility out?
So myself and Margarita had a conversation with the seniors. And when we had our conversation with the seniors, the seniors did give their recommendation. We wanted to make sure that we listened to them just because they are the primary users and the primary stakeholders of the facility. They shared their desire to be able to have a little bit of a delayed opening just so they can get used to being in there, they can get established. And what was discussed is potentially moving it back somewhere closer to around January 1st as a start date. I don't know if that would be ideal for the council, but myself and Margarita, we definitely thought that that would be a really good idea just because we want to make sure that the seniors, who again are the primary stakeholders, they've been waiting to get into this building, they've been promised this building, and they finally got it. And I think it will really show our support in helping them to get established and allowing them to just have it for a while, let it be theirs, let them stake their mark on the facility, and then starting in January, open it up to the community. In the meantime, what we have been doing on the back end is when people call to try to rent the facility, I've been getting emails and keeping a running list of people who have expressed their desires to be able to use the facility and just let them know that, hey, right now, this city, the facility is not for open rental for residents, but once it does become open to the community, we'll send you guys an email. And if you're still interested, you guys can go ahead and put in for a reservation.
Could I just make one recommendation? And I agree with you, I think we should give preference to our seniors. I do feel like there's, maybe the, correct me if I'm wrong. I feel like maybe the police department wanted to use it for a function this past fall. I don't know if maybe someone can correct me on that. But if it's one of our, like, let's say, for instance, the police department, if they wanted to do something there, if we could just make that exception. Isn't there something? There, I can't remember what it is.
Yes. It's something that you had mentioned there.
What's going on?
It's some Santa, something happening.
For the toy giveaway?
Yes.
Yes, the toy giveaway. There you go. Just giving some considerations for things like that that are still being promoted within the city that our departments are actually running to make sure that we can make an exception for that.
Yes, I completely agree. So when we talk about opening this up to, for rental in January, that's opening the calendar up to the community, to residents. If City Staff needs to use it for a function, I know we do a holiday function usually on a year-by-year basis. We are doing our Christmas parade. And I know last year, they've always given the toys out. The gentleman who spoke earlier today, we actually talked to him about being able to give the toys out after, or I think it's after or during the parade or some, after the parade. I think it's on a case-by-case scenario for those longstanding things that by leadership, based off of Mr. Reed and Mr. Gomez and City Council, what you guys approve. But again, opening it up to the entire community to be able to use, that would be delayed until January.
All righty. Go ahead, Katie.
I would like there to be some kind of consideration for nonprofits and possibly doing a lower fee for nonprofits. For example, if there's a Lions Club meeting or something, event that they want to do there, maybe decreasing the fee a little bit. I see a discount for military and seniors, but not for nonprofit use. We have a lot of church groups that do things, Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts. I don't want to make it cost prohibitive for you, for groups like that. Now, if you're doing a wedding or something, these fees make sense, or a birthday party. But for a nonprofit event, we really want to encourage those groups, that you, even if they're not a nonprofit and they're like a youth sports group and they're doing the end-of-the-year party or something like that. We'd really want to encourage the community, these organizations, to use our facilities and be involved in Sibolo because they help make it a home and not just a city where people live. Another consideration I would put in here is the furniture included. I did event planning for three years. That was my career a long time ago. But the rental agreements would include what furniture is included because when people tour a facility, they'll see the furniture there and that's what they expect to have. So if the seniors have additional furniture that they do not want to be rented out, then I think that should be included in here. You will have access to 10 round tables with X amount of chairs so that it's very clear because you will have people who are upset that there aren't things available. We always charged for tables and chairs. And it was like $25 a table and $250 a chair. That's kind of expensive because that was a private business. But I think you could, that could be something that could be considered in the future is to adjust the cost for furniture rentals if they need a bunch or if they just need a few. That would also help protect the quality and maintenance of our furniture that we own by limiting it. If you have a party that only needs two tables and 20 chairs, then we can put everything else up and then there's no chance of that other stuff getting damaged. Confetti and stuff that gets thrown, I would put a caveat in here that it should be biodegradable or eco-friendly. And that's because confetti doesn't just stick to the ground. It flies around everywhere. We have the fire station right there, we have our schoolhouse right there. So even if we do say that they need to pick up all the confetti, that's going to be impossible. They'll get a good chunk of it, but we had a stupid Fortnite pinata that someone got my kid and we found confetti in my house for two years. So, and it was that paper confetti that, it's terrible. So I think doing something that's biodegradable or eco-friendly, that if it does blow away, it's not going to affect our, our stuff or make it look dumpy, then that would probably be good. I saw that the trash needs to be taken out. I would include in there that it needs to be the restroom trash as well. A lot of times, people just think of the big trashcans. They don't think of the little ones in the bathrooms or anything like that. And if you have kids and diaper changes, it becomes a problem. And then the last two are about the ceiling, hanging items and balloons. The ceilings are really tall. I've had events there already. We've done helium balloons. We haven't lost any to the ceiling, but there's always at least one up there from a prior event. And they, the ones that get to the ceiling tend to have helium for three years. They are the longest-lasting balloons ever. And that's...
A lot of this advertised, but we'll make sure. This document here is just the fees. Here is just the fees. But I, but when you look at the description, it will be very transparent of what vendors, what residents will be able to use, what will be accessible and available to them. Thankfully, when we looked at the design of the event center, if you guys haven't seen the event center, you will thoroughly enjoy the work that was done. There is a area that we've designed for the seniors to be able to go and lock up all of their stuff. So we've already had multiple conversations with the seniors. They are aware that at some point, this will be rented out to the community. And when it does get rented out to the community, because of all of the traffic that will be coming in, we've given them a storage and given them the areas in the kitchen. We will be putting locks on the kitchen, on the kitchen cabinets. We have two refrigerators in there, one for public use, one specifically for the, for the seniors that will also have a lock. So we have taken all of those things into consideration to ensure that their supplies are theirs and theirs alone and that no one will have access to it. But we'll make sure that we get together, myself and Margarita, and we'll discuss some of those additional fees. We'll also get with Hana to see what a feasible price is for some of those fees.
I think the fees that you've proposed are reasonable, I think. I don't think they're too bad. But my, my only caveat was like those groups. There's Little League groups, soccer teams, church groups. They don't have $50 an hour for two-hour minimum.
I agree.
And I don't want to put a barrier because taxpayers did pay for it. And so they should be able to use it without any kind of barrier, especially if it's a community-based organization or event. So, appreciate it.
Anyone else have any comments on the policy? We get a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Sibolo Community Center Rental Agreement and Associated Fees.
A second.
Got a motion by Councilwoman Sanchez Stevens, second by Councilwoman Roberts. Please vote. Motion carries.
So with all these things that we've discussed, like the nonprofit rate and all of that, can this come back at some point with some of those changes? I mean, I don't want to hold off on approving a rental fee thing right now because I don't think that what's in there, there's nothing wrong with what's in there. I think that we, what I would like to see is a little bit more.
Yes.
You can always amend it. Come back with an amendment.
We'll be able to amend it.
Let's pass it tonight and come back with an amendment. Okay, all right. Motion carries, 7-0. Thank you, David. I think you're, you're on for the next one too. So let's move on to C, Discussion Action on the Approval of the Public Meeting Room Policy Update. He's a yay. 7-0 approval. He said yay. Okay. All right. David Howard on C?
Yes. So again, for this, for this policy, it is for public meeting room for the seniors, for the seniors, I'm sorry, for the Sibolo Community Center. And we took the policy that was used for the meeting space over at the City Hall Annex that the fire station, fire department uses as their baseline. And we just took that and grafted to our community center. So that's where we got the foundation of a lot of this verbiage from. As you will see, Ms. Cunningham, you will see the local nonprofits in there as being able, one of those eligible groups to be used. And tonight, I stand before you, again, looking for approval for this particular policy.
Any questions on this one?
Do you have a quick question? Could you, could we get some clarifications to what the ordinance regarding smoking within a, entrance to a facility? Because it says 15 feet in the policy here that you provided, but I believe it's 25 feet. So I would just like if it is the difference, if that could be updated in the policy.
Yes.
Thank you.
And what we will do in this policy is reference that the city has a smoke-free policy and that use of the public meeting rooms has to comply. So I'd rather not say 15 or 25 feet if Council ever changes that policy. But in any use of the room, we would be more specific.
Is that your only question, Donetta? Did anyone else have any questions? Make a motion.
I'm making a motion to approve 9C.
Got a motion by Councilman Hicks, second by Councilman Man Roberts.
I had a question. I'm sorry, I was trying to find the page. On one of the pages, it says, will the city be charging a cancellation fee? Most don't charge a cancellation fee if canceled at least five days in advance. But again, policy decision. So there's like red, and I was assuming the red where the change is being made. But I don't think we want to approve a question. It's on page, I don't know what page this is.
And the question is whether we want to, whether we want to change it?
No, I just, I was assuming that the red was indicative of the changes that were being made that we were voting on for this policy. Because there's, there's red in here and I was thinking that those were the things that were being added that we're voting on. But it looks like there's still, like, that was a question. I don't think that was meant to be a question still in here.
No, I don't think, I don't have the document in front of me.
Oh, okay. Yeah, because that one's a question. And then on this page, it says, holiday use fee shall require an additional holiday use fee of blank. So maybe this one's just like a draft version and we didn't get the final? Where is that? So they just put it, there's like no, there's no title page. Okay, never mind. Norma just saw that there's a draft and then the, but there was no title page. So I couldn't, I thought it was all one.
Okay.
Okay, we're good.
Please vote.
Thank you.
Motion carries, 7-0. Thank you, David.
Thank you, guys.
All right. On the next one, D, do you want to put the motion to table out there?
I would like to make a motion to table 9D in regards to the drainage for HOA open space and move it to our October 14th meeting.
Okay. So we have a motion to table 9D by Councilwoman Roberts, second by Councilman Roberts. Please vote. Yeah, just 6-0. Okay. Next up is E, Discussion Action on the City of Sibolo Employee Handbook Policy Review. Ms. Taplin, welcome, Ms. Taplin.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, I'll be sharing our handbook review. As you know, the People and Performance Department is reviewing our handbook policies. We'd like to present our work to you so far to date.
Excuse me, Ms. Taplin, I can't really hear. I don't know, it just seems the volume is really low. If we can get some assistance, Mr. Reed, in increasing the volume on the mics, that would be great.
Yes, and Mr. Huggins walked out to go talk to our IT gentleman in the back.
Tonight, we will look at our questions for council, the review of the handbook review process that you guys have approved before, the policies that we're asking for review for this particular session, the next steps, and then the resources that we're using to review our handbook policies. And then last, feedback and direction from council. Our two questions tonight, do you have any questions about the resources that we're using for the updates? And then do you have any questions regarding the policies that we're presenting this evening? You remember when we started this handbook process, we presented to council that we're looking at three buckets of policies. First is compliance. These are our absolute priority to make sure that we're current and we're following state and federal law. Next is best practices, and then the last one is general business, ones that you would expect to find in any handbook. A quick review of our flow chart through the approval process. We're going through our policies in order of priority. You can see we have some policies with no changes, some that we're updating, and then some that are new. Our first process has been a review through the city attorney's office, the city manager's office, executive team, which has this set of policies here, leading the herd review, and then to you for approval. And then, once the handbook is approved, it will be put to our intranet for our employees to have access to. The policies that you have in your packet for this time, the first is the development of the employee handbook. This is simply just to look at the process of where are we writing our policies. Mr. Reed approves the policies and then they go to you for final approval. Our compliance policies, Code of Ethics and Standard of Conduct, the EEOC Title VII. We have a complaints process for Title VII. This really helps our employees understand, is their concern or complaint an actual Title VII concern or is it more of a grievance? We have our Americans with Disabilities Act policy, Family Medical Leave Act, our USARA policy, Mother Friendly Worksite, whistleblower, and our Drug and Alcohol-Free Workplace. The ones that you see highlighted have significance. They have state or federal compliance. And we have, all of the policies have undergone city attorney's review. But those that you see highlighted have been intensely reviewed by the city attorney's office. Section 3 is our Violence in the Workplace Policy. For compensation is longevity. And then Section 5, Benefits, TMRS, Work Comp, Employee Assistance Program, and Employment Compensation. And then in Section 7 is our New Grievance Policy. Our next steps will be bringing you our second set of policies to review on the October 14th council meeting. October 28th will be your final set of policies to review. On the 18th, we intend to bring the entire handbook, each policy individual, as you've seen them here, for your approval and ready to go to the employees. The resources that we're using, this is important so that you guys have confidence in our process that we are walking through. We are using, of course, our employee handbook. The last one we have was approved January 2019. The last one we have was approved January twenty nineteen, and there are supplemental policies as well that you will see in each of the policies in the review. Uh, Texas Municipal League gave a great legislative update to TMHRA. So we've walked through each of those to make sure that we have all of those policies included. TMHRA has also provided strongly recommended policies. Some of the policies that you see that might be new, we have, um, walked through the TMHRA strongly recommended policies drafts to Wright Hours. And then lastly, because we have, um, we want to make sure that our policies match our neighbors, we also have been reviewing shirts, New Braunfels, and Bernie policies as well. And then last, of course, is our State of Texas statutes. Does council have any questions about the resources used for the update?
Any questions? Nobody?
I only have, oh, go ahead. I have a second.
Yeah, so does council have any questions regarding the policies presented this evening?
Yes, I am thrilled with this. These are fantastic. Thank you so much for working on this.
Oh, my team has been working very hard.
It has been needed for so long, and I know that it will help staff as well. It's easier to do your job when you know the boundaries.
Absolutely.
My one question slash concern a little bit is, the beginning of every policy says, this policy does not constitute an employment contract or a guarantee of continued employment. The City of Sibolo reserves the right to change the provisions of this policy at any time. Nothing in this policy limits the city manager's authority to establish or revise internal policies and procedures. This policy guides the operation of the city and does not create a legally enforceable interest for employees or limit the city manager's authority to terminate an employee at will. While I don't disagree necessarily with the wording, it just hits really hard at the very beginning of every policy. If I'm a new employee with the city and I see that on every single policy, what I read is, this doesn't matter because they can change it to fire me if they want. And I don't think that that's the intent, so I would ask that the wording may be looked at, because I, I think, and please correct me, I think the intent is to say, our policies can change, this policy may not always look like this, we may have to edit it or change it or whatever. I think it's also saying that the city manager has, and this came up before, that the city manager has authority to make exceptions to the personnel policy based on his, um, his desire. And three, I think it's meant to reinforce that Texas is at will and we can fire anyone for any reason, we don't even have to give a reason. I think that that's the intent. It's just really harsh at the beginning of every single policy. Like if I, seriously, if I were an employee coming in and I'm going through the personnel policies in my first week, and I see that on every single page, it's like, they're trying to fire people. They, if they don't like me, they will fire me because it says they don't even have to follow these policies if they don't want to. So I don't know if we can, like, reword it a little bit, make it a little softer, and tuck it at the end. I think it is important to have those things in there, it just, it's very.
Absolutely. Because there's standalone policies somewhere, we had made the decision, but I'll work with Mr. Reed to get that language, um, for council's approval. Any other questions?
Maybe put like, like she says, take that and put it at the end and just put Sibolo, City of Sibolo is at will.
Yeah.
Say it is at will, so.
Yeah, I'll work with Mr. Reed and he'll get.
Yeah, and it could go at the, and I meant to say it could go at the end of each of the policies, like at the bottom in italics or whatever as a footnote, but just at the very top is the first thing you read with every policy. It would give me a complex.
Yeah, thank you for that feedback.
I have one last thing. I think the last time that this was being brought forward, the last time, um, you had made a comment that we all had the employee handbook to reference, and I don't think we do. And I just want to ask the rest of the council, do y'all have the entire just employee handbook since earlier this summer? Um, okay.
Yeah, I'll get that to Mr. Reed and he can send that to you guys.
Okay, especially since we're just breaking apart pieces yet, so we can have it in its entirety.
Absolutely.
Any other questions? Okay, I think we're good. Do we need to take a vote on this?
Yeah, I moved to direct staff to bring these policies back for approval after council reviews all remaining personnel policies.
Got a motion by Councilwoman Cunningham, second by Councilman Hicks. Please vote. Okay. Motion carries seven zero. Thanks, Ms. Taplin. Okay, next up is.
Sorry, may I just say?
Just to clarify, you said final. You mean preliminary?
I meant preliminary.
Okay.
Sorry.
Just checking.
I, I threw myself off by pulling up the wrong sheet. Okay, this is unit nine A. Um, the, we did conduct a punch walk, um, out in the field. There is one thousand seven hundred and seventy-nine linear feet of sanitary sewer, one thousand seven hundred and sixty-three feet of streets. The water is GVSUD, um, and there is no significant drainage, but there is some minor. Uh, total value of improvements is six hundred eighty-nine thousand three hundred and twenty-three I have gone out and verified all punch list items have been addressed. Um, at the last council meeting, um, y'all had requested that the developer meet with the HOA to discuss some concerns with the HOA. Uh, I understand that meeting did occur yesterday. Um, the developers' representatives are here if y'all have any questions for them. Having said all of that, I do recommend acceptance of preliminary, or preliminary acceptance of the infrastructure.
I just want to thank the developers' representatives again for coming to the meeting yesterday. Um, as I explained yesterday, this is not, unfortunately, this isn't the only neighborhood where we're running into things like this. Sibolo has a lot of neighborhoods that were built ten years ago, and now we have new phases being added on. And those new phases impact the older phases, just because you have settling of the older phases, the new phases are higher, it causes drainage issues, on and on and on. Um, y'all have been very willing to meet. I've met with you out at phase seven? Was that seven?
Seven.
Seven, um, last month. I know there's been other meetings prior to that, you've been working with the HOA. Uh, I think the meeting yesterday was really helpful. I think we all kind of got on the same page, and it was clear to me at least that there's pieces that the city needs to take care of for the HOA, there's pieces that the developer and the HOA are going to discuss and find a solution on, and then there's the city and the developer that we need to move forward on. Section seven and section eight, there's issues with those that I know Mr. Otto's been working with the, the builder, whoever, on correcting those things. But with section nine, um, if you look at section nine as an individual unit, with all the things that are required for preliminary acceptance, I don't see why we should not move forward with preliminary acceptance.
Is that a motion?
I can make a motion. I make a motion to approve preliminary acceptance of public infrastructure for Saddle Creek Unit Nine A.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilwoman Cunningham, second by Councilwoman Sanchez Stevens. Please vote. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you, Chris. Oh, you're on the next one too.
I'm back.
G, discussion action regarding the preliminary acceptance of public infrastructure for Buffalo Heights Crossing Two, Knights Crossing Phase Two. Chris Otto.
Yes, Buffalo Crossing Two, Knights Crossing Phase Two. Um, the developer has petitioned for preliminary acceptance of the infrastructure. Um, this is just the extension of the roadway. There are no homes associated with this. Um, we did do a punch walk, um, and I did provide a punch list to the developer, and they, they have addressed all items. Um, there is three hundred seventy-five feet of eight-inch water, there's two hundred forty-six feet of twelve-inch water, um, and then one thousand eight hundred and eighty-six linear feet of street. The total value of infrastructure is seven hundred thirty-six thousand two hundred and eighty-five dollars. Again, I have verified that all punch list items were addressed, and therefore I am recommending acceptance, or preliminary acceptance of infrastructure.
This is.
Yes.
So, yeah, this is a reserve. So when we last met with them, they said that we needed to approve that one plat so they could start the amenities. Have they issued, worked on the permit for the amenities? They were supposed to submit that. I think that was phase six.
No.
Okay, it was submitted?
We haven't contacted.
Okay, so the permit for the amenity center is in progress, is what I'm hearing.
Yes.
So.
This wrote, uh, absolutely.
Can you, yeah.
We'll have the developers' rep speak on the microphone, if you'll just say your name and who you represent.
I'm Lance Elling with KCI. And so, um, this roadway will provide the connection from Buffalo Crossing to Knights Crossing, and then also provide access to the amenity center, which we submitted plans for.
Okay, but, so Buffalo Crossing to Knights Crossing, the little tiny section that exists of Knight Crossing, correct?
Yes, and it makes the connection to Buffalo Crossing.
Okay, and so I have not met you yet. I'm Katie.
I'm Lance.
Nice to meet you. Um, Knights Crossing has been a sticking point for us for a while. We had a public infrastructure agreement, it was supposed to be built, it's still not built. We even have the stoplights at eleven oh three, and we're still waiting for it to connect to eleven oh three. Um, I know a little bit has been built to the top, and I know there were issues that the developer has expressed with funding the other section of the road. I am very hesitant to continue to approve more homes and more stuff being built when we still have this other road that's not being built. We were told if we approved the amenity center, that would open up part of the road, and then they would be working on section three next, is what I remember being told.
So the trigger for Knights Crossing to continue further south was the four-hundredth recorded lot.
Does this push it over it?
There's no homes associated with this one. So the pre, the previous units got accepted, I believe, I believe it was three hundred ninety-nine. Um, this is, this is the extension of that road working towards that goal. Um, I did talk to Mary Stewart, um, I talked to Mary Stewart a lot, um, but it was probably about a month, six weeks ago, I talked to her about the bridge that they have to build, and they are working on those plans.
But I've heard that they've been working on those plans for like three years. So while I understand, and every time I've met with them, they have been lovely, they have been fantastic. We have got to get this road in. We, I, I understand that this connects to Knights Crossing, but this isn't going to cause, this isn't going to add any additional connectivity north-south for us through Sibolo. We still have all of these houses and all these people driving through Buffalo Crossing to get to eleven oh three. Um, on that road, they're still speeding, or on Weidner Road, which is a train wreck. We have Town Creek Road construction starting soon, if it hasn't already. I'm concerned that we're just going to keep delaying, 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 and how many more, how many more plats do we have with zero houses?
This should be the last one.
This should be the last one.
Yeah, because everything else has homes associated with it.
Mr. Otto, you need to understand, I was on planning and zoning, so that's over eight years ago, when they said that they were going to put that bridge in. It's a long process. I mean, this is getting ridiculous. And you go back and tell them that, that this is unacceptable, the way that they're, that pisses out me.
I have a date in my head, but I don't think it's right. Do you know when the bridge is going to be submitted? Has that been established yet?
No, we, we're gonna, we're gonna have a meeting with you guys to kind of talk over the bridge and then path and move forward with it.
Okay, when?
Uh, that's something like, we gonna get this approved and then have that meeting right afterwards.
Oh, I heard that before.
So, in, in all fairness, in all fairness, I don't think this gentleman makes the decision for Israel Fogel.
No, I know, I've never seen him before. Name's not familiar.
Okay.
I feel like I've met everyone over there. So I know this one has no housing associated with it. Preliminary acceptance does what? What does it allow them to do? Because my understanding is preliminary acceptance is saying, yeah, you already built it.
It allows them to record the plat without doing a performance bond. And so with preliminary acceptance, they would do the maintenance bond, which is twenty-five percent of the improvement value. Um, this one would have a twelve-month maintenance period, and then at twelve months, we would come back for final acceptance, and then there'd be another twelve-month warranty period on it.
Well, it opens up preliminary acceptance, it opens for access.
Well, yeah, it'll, it'll open for access, yes. But it, it's not holding up any homes or anything.
It, it's, it's holding up the amenity center at this point, is the problem.
Well, that's what I was told with plat six, is that plat six was going to allow the amenity center to open. There was nothing about plat, whatever this is, two.
There's an, there's an access point on both, on through unit six, and then on to Knights Crossing and for fire, for fire.
It's a secondary access.
I know you're, you're new. I know you don't know the whole history of this. You seem very nice. This is like being gaslit by a crazy ex-boyfriend. We get told something, and then it changes. And then we get told, no, 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 we're going to do this, just approve plat six because we'll put in the amenity center that they keep asking about. It'll, we'll turn it, we have the permit ready to go, we have the drawings ready to go. Here we are, four months later, five months later? Where is it? We even said we'd fast-track that permit. Mr. Reed reached out to permitting and, and let them know that it was coming. Mr. Otto let them know it was coming too. Like, we, we made exceptions for that, and it's now the end of summer. No amenities. I don't think it's been started. So, yes.
Ms. Cunningham, if you would like, I can send Mary Stewart and Israel Fogel an email tonight, asking for an updated schedule on the amenity center, and I would include Matt Hansen, our chief building official, on that, so that I can get verification of the status of the plan review. And then I can send an update to the entire council based upon what Mr. Fogel responds.
I would appreciate that.
But I would also ask them about the, the bridge, because, I mean, that's.
I will also ask what the plans are around the bridge, which will be tied to the next plat that has residential lots.
Okay. So my gut is saying I would like to table this until we get that meeting that you were saying that, that y'all want to have, that we get it scheduled? And until we get the information about the amenity center and all that business.
Okay, so we got a motion to table by Councilwoman Cunningham, second by Councilman Hicks. Please vote.
And if this, if that stuff happens before the next meeting, then yes, have it on the next agenda.
Okay, motion to table has succeeded. The motion is tabled.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to nine H, discussion action on amending the sign ordinance regarding kiosk signs, re-competing the city's sign plaza program and expanding its purpose ahead of the next renewal period for March twenty twenty-six. Councilman McLaughlin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, met with Mr. Reed, what, three months ago roughly, to discuss this. Bottom line up front, we have the signs around town for the developers. I'd like to open that up to businesses in Sibolo. Whether they decide to utilize that or not, that's up to them. Um, but giving the restrictions we have on sign policies, I think it's an ideal spot for businesses here to be able to advertise. If they so choose, one more way we can kind of at least improve our business outreach within Sibolo. And any other details, I'll yield to Mr. Reed, the expert.
Is there any examples, like, uh, you know, sometimes I just need to picture it.
Off of Rip's Cruisler behind Dunkin' Donuts, is that like the wooly-looking?
Correct.
Sign, right outside of Buffalo Crossing, there's one.
Yes.
It has like the home builders on it.
That is exactly what you're, we're talking about. And again, this agreement was originally signed around twenty fourteen. Uh, it has five-year terms, it's automatically renewed unless a party notifies the other of terminating. And so this has been on a rolling five-year renewal. It expires, the, this current five-year term expires in March of twenty twenty-six. And so when Mr. McLaughlin had the idea of, well, why aren't we promoting, providing the opportunity to promote local businesses on these way, I call them wayfinding signs? Um, I said, there's no prohibition of you allowing businesses to pay a fee to be on these signs. We're just following a template that's been for home builders and new subdivisions. So the idea was to bring this forward and ask council, would you like us to re-compete our kiosk signs or wayfinding signs program? And if, if we do re-compete it, would you like us to expand the purpose of the program? So that it's what is today, plus any local businesses that would want to have a blade on the signs as well? I would tell you that the standards for these signs have improved over the last eleven years, so we would also get better standards when it comes to just the blades themselves and maybe even the look.
Yeah, I, I would just say that if we are going to do it, then, you know, just make sure that we stay consistent with the look and feel, and we, we don't have blades that are, you know, different colors and just all weird. I, I can understand maybe the logo, you know, like a little small area for their custom logo, but then just the, the standard writing. but then just the, the standard writing with, like, everything else, you know, for the name of the business. But I know that, you know, Tech Todd does that on the roads for businesses.
Yes.
Exit, you know, three fifty-two, you know, come and have like, a gas station, a hotel, you know, so...
I think that's what Mr. McLaughlin's idea is, is really just building on what you, you referenced.
Okay.
And I understand, oh, go ahead.
I was just gonna echo the, the look of it. I know I've brought up signs before, and like, our city buildings having a more cohesive look. Shirts has all tan buildings with grain trim, and they have the big boulders as their signs for their buildings. There's consistency in that. When we've built our police station, our fire station number three, and the schoolhouse are all bright red. We've got fire station one that's tan and silver. Fire station two is silver. They're all different colors. Their signs are all different. They're gonna need to be repainted at some point, so I think if we determine our, our colors, maybe that's a Jeanette thing with her marketing. But determine our color scheme that we wanna stick with, and then when we look at these signs, make sure that they're fitting with the style and the look of what we're moving toward. Instead of just, oh, we like this right now, and then nothing else matches it. It just looks disjointed.
Councilman Hicks.
So, I, I know that they're like, six, eight inches tall, most of them, correct?
Yes, I think six, not more than eight inches are the current blade standards.
Right. So, are you asking that they could take up two of those spots to be able to put their business? Or just keep it with the, the size that we currently have?
My original thought was just keep the size we currently have, but...
Okay, because, you know, we start getting bigger than that's, but they'll, they'll be paying for it. I understand they'll be paying for it. Ten, ten inches, okay. All right, that's, that's my question.
And when we, if council's direction is to recompete this, we'll look for the companies to provide examples of what they would put as the standard in the agreement. So, you'll actually get illustrations from the companies that submit these.
But don't we already have the wayfinders?
Correct, so we have an eleven-year-old agreement, and so, the standards that we have in the agreement are the standards of the blades and the overall signs that are in the community. All I was saying is, we'll tell them we wanna promote businesses as well as new subdivisions and home builders. And then we're gonna ask them, unless there's a specific direction from council, how would you do that? What would it look like? And they will provide color renderings as part of the proposal back to the city. You will get to see exactly what it would look like. Some of these companies may be doing this in other communities, have figured out the solution already. I'm telling you, staff has no preconceived idea of what the blades would look like.
Did you have a question, Donetta?
I did have a question. Because who pays for those signs? I mean, I know there would be a fee for the business to put their information on the sign, but who pays for that sign to actually go into the ground?
So, today, National Sign Plaza is the company that we have the agreement with. They pay for all the costs. We receive a fee based upon every blade for every month that the, a blade is on a sign. And so, we receive those quarterly. So, we put zero money into this. And this is a program that went dormant in the city. When the city council directed us to be strict on the bandit signs, I reached out to this company and said, why do we have none of these wayfinding signs? And they said, during COVID, we pulled a lot of signs. I said, well, you need to get back into our community. They paid a hundred percent to put all the brand-new signs up. And that helped us alleviate bandit signs. Because those businesses that were using them, the home builders, realized that we were going to fine them if they put a bandit sign up, but yet they needed some way to promote their business. So, it's, it's a win-win.
You wanna make a motion? Please, seven zero. Okay, next item on the agenda is I. So, we have a discussion action on a vote for the TML Region Seven Director. And so, this is a spot that is being vacated by, I believe, Councilman Hicks, right? So, Councilman Hicks was the former TML...
I still am, up until October thirty-first.
Pulled over, TML Region Seven Director. And so, we have two people up for consideration. We have our councilwoman, Norma Sanchez-Stevens, and we also have a live vote Councilman Ed Simics, Peggy's husband.
I'd like to make a motion to, to let Mrs. Sanchez-Stevens, she's part of our group. You get a lot of stuff out of it. You get to go to the summit right before the legislative session, and get to put your input like you'd brought to me. Remember, I asked you, is there anything you want? And you said, yeah, this, this, and this. We take it up there and we put it on the agenda. So, I'd like for her to continue to be our voice.
I'd like to second that, because I do see Mrs. Sanchez-Stevens as someone who would bring the information back to us as well, and keep the residents and our council informed in TML events and look, and other things that are going on in state.
We have a motion by Councilman Hicks, a second by Councilwoman Roberts.
Yay. It's, it's completely just...
Thank you very much for the consideration. I'll probably serve for Region Seven. Thank you.
I'd gotten a phone call from a business right there across from fire station number two. Their concern is the vape shop, or the CBD shop right next to it. The smell keeps infiltrating into their business. It's a dental office. And they, I was wondering if there's anything that they can do about it, but we need to look at our nuisance ordinance and see if there's anything that we can change or bring forward to, to help this out. Because, you know, it's another business that was there long before the vape shop decided to, to open shop up there.
What, what has the landlord said? Haven't they talked to the person that they're renting the building from?
They have, and they're, they're like, there's nothing that they can...
This is a private matter between businesses, though.
I understand, but i, if it's a nuisance, then we need to look into, it, it's a nuisance.
I don't know about government overreach. I mean, this is private businesses.
We, we actually have a nuisance odor ordinance, correct? Has that been effective? Can you give us an update of our recent request of this specific dental office next to a vape shop?
So, I'm not, so yes, your, your nuisance ordinance does include odor, so there's no reason why enforcement can't take place if it's in violation of that ordinance already. So, that's my understanding, was that your code enforcement staff was going to explore that option.
Right, and does staff have an update regarding this particular instance with, between businesses?
Yes, code enforcement staff did engage our new prosecutor, and our prosecutor has an opinion that the current language does not allow us to enforce on one tenant to another tenant. It would have to be greater than fifty feet away. So, we would have to revise our nuisance ordinance in order to effectuate what Mr. Hicks has brought to us tonight.
I mean, I kinda feel like the business owner who's complaining should complain to the police or to code, or whoever they need to report it to. Has that happened?
At first, may I give a little bit of context? I remember seeing this on CCLX Fix, I believe it was like, last fall. So, there is a dental office next to a vape shop, and the odor was seeping into the dental office where even the patients were becoming nauseous, and the staff was becoming nauseous. So, it's become quite a bit of an, a nuisance. I rem, I recall seeing staff reply that there was nothing that they could do as far as code compliance. So, now the dental office has returned and requested for assistance, in which we did with, with staff find a nuisance odor ordinance that could be applied. And it's just a matter of, is code enforcement going out there? Are they complying, or i, is the odor staying within one shot? Because one thing I also mentioned to staff is that I noticed that within our smoking ordinance itself, when it comes to a bar establishment, it does require there to be a, a wall where vapor, smoke could not permeate into other areas. And also, it required some sort of ventilation if it was in a restaurant. But we realize that vape shops are something new, and it's taken time to see what nuisances they might produce. But yet, this particular, they're, they're not included within those wall barriers or those ventilations. So, the best thing that we have at this current moment is to enforce the nuisance odor ordinance. So, it's just a matter of, what would you, how are you gonna protect the, the right of businesses next door when there's vape shops? And they have the right to smoke within there if their, their vape shop allows it. They have that, that right. We don't wanna take that right away from the way that they conduct their business. However, when it, it disturbs the, the quality of doing business next to the adjacent businesses, and it, and it causes their businesses to lose business, then that's an infringement on their, their rights in that neighboring and adjacent establishment.
Okay. Any other discussion on this?
No, I just, thank, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Sanchez-Stevens. We can just make sure that code enforcement's going out there. I know that they'll need to get a call, but I, I mean, we can make an attempt to go out to the dental business and say, hey, it was brought to our attention.
And, and again, staff has worked with our city prosecutor. We're gonna be working with Dan Santi and our city prosecutor to clarify the application of our current regulations for an instance that you're referring to. So, we will continue to work on that, and I'll update the council after we confer with the city attorney.
All right, thank you. Next up is K, discussion from council members that have attended seminars, events, or meetings. We'll start with Councilman Hicks.
Couple things I've attended, but no, nothing real. No TML, nothing in the past two weeks.
Thank you, sir. Donetta?
Oh, well, other than, I mentioned it, you weren't here. We will be getting, the county, at the last county commissioners' court, they announced that we'll be getting one of the Dodge Durangos. Yes, the extra one.
The extra one, right? So, we'll get the Tahoe and the Durango?
Yes.
So, the, the way that we settled it was Shirts and us, we're gonna split them?
Yes.
The ones from Marion?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. All right, good. Donetta?
No, I've been very silent the last few weeks.
I'm sorry?
I've been silent.
Oh, I thought you said, I've been sad for the past... Okay, got, got you, okay. All right. Donetta, I mean, Norma.
So, I did, was able to participate at the, oh, Joel was there too, at the food bank distribution there at Steel. So, that was great, doing that Saturday, this past Saturday morning. And also, had an opportunity to participate at the Guadalupe County Children's Advocacy Center event. Their big bash on Saturday night just as well, and which the RPD was in attendance with that too, so it was great to see some familiar faces. And we also visited, Councilman Hicks and I accepted that offer for CASA that every week. We all got emailed to attend their fortieth year celebration in Seguin, so we were able to go out there and also represent our city in support of CASA. Also, just wanted to make mention that this particular Saturday, we do have our Sibolo fun run. And just wanted to remind that if council members have not yet registered to volunteer, please consider showing up and seeing where you could lend a helping hand, and, and then just continue to promote the Sibolo fun run for this weekend. And I think that is it. Thank you.
Thank you, Norma. Katie?
Last Saturday, Shirts, Sibolo, Selma, everyone in the area, put all the police officers and child passenger safety technicians came together for a child passenger safety week. Yay. It's always in September, it's always about a thousand degrees when we're out there. This year, it was a huge success. We had twenty-three, twenty-four cars come through. Usually, it's not that many. And they actually decreased the timeframe from nine to eleven. So, we had some of our Sibolo PD there, who are child passenger safety technicians, and everyone else. It's really great to see how well all the different cities work together. The police, fire, EMS from all different cities. That's always, it makes me happy, even though Sibolo's the best. It is nice to see them all getting along and kinda joking around. Saddle Creek Ranch, we met with the developer last night. Ms. Roberts, Ms. Sanchez-Stevens and I were there, staff and the developer. We really, really, really appreciate staff for organizing that and getting that together and working with the HOA as well to get that, to make that happen. Those discussions help tremendously. It helps the, the residents feel like they're being heard. It helps us clarify things that get mixed up and lost in, in translation when you don't have nonverbal communication. It makes it really hard to understand meaning and talk things out. So, I feel like we all left there with a better understanding of what the concerns were and what the options are moving forward. I was gonna mention the fun run, that's on Saturday. Sign up to volunteer, please, I know they still need them. I have an ISD bond meeting tomorrow. Mr. Reed is also on that committee. It's tomorrow night. But we'll be discussing the bonds, and it will bring back any pertinent information. And then, the Lions Club Casino Night is on October twenty-fourth. If anyone would like to donate something, I would love to put together a donation basket or a Sibolo-themed donation basket. So, I already have Old Main donating a gift card. I've reached out to a couple other people. So, if you have anything from Sibolo, I have your stuff too, yeah. So, I have, I'll put a basket, a themed basket together so that we can have a Sibolo basket. The funds that get raised go towards children with vision impairment. There's a Lions camp that kids with disabilities get to go to during the summer that the Lions Club maintains. A lot of the funds this year have also been going to flood victims and revitalization and things like that. So, if you have any questions about that, let me know. If you wanna join Lions Club, it's super fun bunch.
Thank you, Katie. Councilman Mahoney, anything? Roberts? Jeff? Nope, okay. All right, moving on to item L, discussion on items the council would like on the next agenda. Jeff, anything? Randy? Mahoney? Katie? Norma? Donetta?
I would just like to make sure that we do pull back the Saddle Creek Ranch onto our next meeting as well as, as far as the ordinance, or not ordinance, but the drainage questions. And also, there are two policies that the subcommittee has been working on that we should be getting back from our attorney that I would like to make sure is on the agenda for council to review and possible approve.
Thank you. Joel, anything? Okay. Thank you, sir. All right, M, discussion action on the review and confirmation of all upcoming special meetings and workshops, and scheduling time, date, and place of additional special meetings or workshops. Peggy, I know we said to do one on the twenty-eighth, is that right? Twenty-seventh? Okay.
Seven.
So, we covered that. Anything else?
No, on the fourteenth, you will have appointments at the six o'clock.
So, be here, be here by six for appointments to boards, committees, commissions, and so forth. All right. Can I get a motion on item twelve? Nope, they're, they've been canceled. All in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you.